Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Griffin. Griffin.
Here.
Bishop. Conwell. Gray. Hairston. Harsh. House. Jones. Casey. McCorm-- I'm sorry. Mauer. McCormack. Mooney. Polensick. Santana. Slyf. Spencer. Starr. You have a quorum. You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, will everyone please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please dispense with the journal.
By Councilmember Bishop, that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with the journal approved, seconded by Councilmember Slyf.
Thank you. We'll now go to public comment. I remind all council members to please turn around to view the speakers for public comment, and I will remind all of the speakers for public comment to make sure that you acknowledge your time when you see yellow, that means to wrap it up, and when you see red, that means that we need you to abruptly stop. So please, uh, proceed, and we'll start out with Lo from Ward Seven to talk about participatory budgeting, representing nobody, and she is not being paid by anyone, or they are not being paid by anyone. Lo?
Sorry again, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Lu. Only short, not low. Well, uh, it has been a year. We got, we have got a new mayor, lots of new council members, and people are really eager to expect we will have a new of everything. However, things are not that easy. You guys are carrying heavy loads on your shoulders. So, let me offer you an idea. For people who have been so disappointed by lots of things in the city, you guys actually have lots of new tools to help all of us and also to help yourself, to help us, to change the current state of low voting rate, to change the distrust between our residents and the government. There's one thing we definitely can do, can try, to show that all of you, doesn't matter you have been on the seat recently or from a while ago, you actually have an open mind, you are willing to take all the steps to help all your constituents out. I found that out. It's called participatory budgeting. Well, people always think that we need this, we need that, but we always heard there's no funding for it. So I guess this will be a good opportunity, the opera funds could be a pilot, to show people that we actually have the power, we can turn our cities around together. This will help to fill up the gap of that horrible distrust. Lots of people, they know their council members actually is working hard for them, but lots of people don't feel that. Why? Because there are too many different people in our city and too many needs. Each person is just one person. Even you have assistants, you only have a 24 hours a day, just like everybody else. However, when you tell your people that, hey, I'm busy, I'm working for you, but you also have to let me know what could be the best thing for me to do for you, people would definitely appreciate that, because that is personal. You are not asking them to vote for you only. You actually want to help them, you actually want to help the city. That makes them feel good. That makes them feel government officials really cares. This is the holiday season. Think about that. We still have a high poverty rate in the city. We need to change that. We were top 10 cities, one of the top 10 cities back in 70s, look at where we are now. So I learned from all of you, doing all kinds of works together, but now it's really the time. We have to race with the time, patch everything together, fill up the gap, get rid of that mistrust. Let's have some holiday spirit. Even a short person like me can have that high hope. So, please be our holiday heroes, even without masks and capes. Considering this as a tool, you can try in a bigger scale, because all 17 wards can participate together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have Shirley Bell. Shirley Bell is from Ward Four to talk about participatory budgeting, not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone.
Good evening, neighbors, Clevelanders, and leaders. I am here to address our local elected officials with the questions, with a question. Do I still have cause for hope? November 2nd, 2021 was the day that most of us in the room either jumped for joy or sat and resolved as the election results came in. Weeks before, CMSD students went through mock elections to learn how our democratic system will provide them with the change they wish to see in their community. Did we lie to them? It, it was the moment before election that I sat in a crowded Shaker Square restaurant that was beaming with expectation that I allowed myself to hope. I allowed myself to hope at that president, at that Merrill debate, I'm sorry, I allowed myself to hope at that Merrill debate, I had a level of faith for the change to come. I hoped for a change in the way funding was allocated so that it reflected the interest of those living in the community. Participatory budgeting, the people's budget. I also hope that we would move away from what seems like modern-day sharecropping and change the policies that the Cleveland Land Bank operates, operates under. Moving past just leasing, but towards land trust and green spaces that are owned by and reflect the community that they are located in. Who am I? I am a mother, I'm a Mount Pleasant Buckeye Woodland resident, I am a homeowner, I'm a business owner, I'm a community leader, an educator, a licensed counselor, I'm an urban farmer, but most importantly, I am a stakeholder. I voted. I believe the dream. I was sold the dream. I am here with receipts. If I had more time, I would go more into it. So the question is, do we still have cause for hope? Are we looking at the same old political regime in Cleveland? Or is there going to be a change? I support participatory budget. I support a change in the land bank policies. And I support them. And I hope to see police trained on how to address the community, including on how to address those with mental health concerns. Thank you.
Next we have Pot, June Ponich, and they're here representing Ward 14, participatory budgeting, not representing anyone and not being paid.
Sorry, sorry about that. Thank you for having me tonight. I want to bring up two matters before you. First is why I support participatory budgeting, and the second is on the areas where we could spend part of the ARPA money on. I understand that you guys at City Hall are busy trying to address all the needs of the city. There's, there's probably a lot of issues that occupy your time. I feel this when I emailed Jasmine, and it takes a while for me to get a response, but I, I'm happy to get a response and I try to be patient. We all want the same thing, to make Cleveland a better and more equitable place. The folks at participatory budgeting have nothing better to do with their time, other than talk about budgeting at Happy Dog. These guys are happy to spend hours meeting with community leaders, gathering knowledge from local university professors and their students, and listening to whoever that wants to say something. We have a lot of talent in Cleveland. The more we reach out, the more we engage, the more diverse our perspectives will be. We can have many different solutions to make Cleveland a better place. My second point is on where we should spend some of the ARPA funds. There are two places that I would like to see ARPA funds be spent on. The first is on reducing the cost of water for our residents. We pay more for water and sewage than our neighboring communities. The second place to spend ARPA money on that I would like to see is on having high-speed internet access. I live in Clark Fulton, we have Empower CLE. They try, but the speeds are low and the latency is high. Other neighborhoods have fiber. Maybe we don't have fiber because our median income is very low and they assume we can't afford it. High-speed internet access is a contributing factor to having equity in the city. So, thank you.
Next we have Ellen Kubit from Ward Three to talk about participatory budgeting, not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone. Ellen Kubit.
Oh, I wasn't gonna touch it. Same. Good evening, council, fellow attendees, and the public. My name is Ellen Kubit, a 10-year-plus resident of Cleveland, a lifelong resident of Northeast Ohio, and Central Committee member for Ward Three Precinct B. Participatory Budgeting Cleveland, a grassroots coalition led by Clevelanders, is focused on bringing the democratic process of participatory budgeting to Cleveland. Participatory Budgeting, or PB for short... The suspense is killing me. ...allows for Cleveland residents to have a direct say in how public moneying is spent in their communities. For over a year, through deliberate and widespread outreach, PB Cleveland has raised awareness and support among residents, businesses, and community leaders, with the hopes of starting the participatory process here in Cleveland. The campaign has been endorsed by over 60 organizations, and as of today, and still growing, there are over 750 Clevelanders who have expressed their interest in demonstrating their values through public spending. In a city where there's over 30% of its population is living in poverty, we are calling upon our ward leaders to recognize an opportunity that shows there are voices that are unheard. In a city with declining voter turnout, we are calling upon our ward leaders to support an opportunity that has garnered enthusiasm for the residents of 44128 all the way to the residents of 44135. Every day, Clevelanders make challenging budgeting decisions. Imagine what we can learn from them. Why deny a single mother navigating rapidly and growing inflation and stagnant wages the opportunity to demonstrate how public spending can be used to support her family? Why deny a senior resident facing increasing property taxes on a home in need of repair the opportunity to demonstrate how public spending can be used to guarantee housing for all? Why deny a sophomore at Garrett Morgan, not yet old enough to vote but juggles a part-time job, the opportunity to demonstrate how public spending can be used to keep him and his friends in school and away from violence? Participatory budgeting elevates all three of these voices and more. Is that not something we deserve? Participatory budgeting is a clear commitment to the Clevelanders who never left, the Clevelanders who came back, and the Clevelanders who will one day call this city their home. We respectfully ask you to allow it to move forward in January. Thank you.
Next we have Thomas Fox from Ohio City, Cleveland Waterfront Music Programming. He's representing great culture and not being paid by anyone.
Is this on? Okay, cool. How's everybody doing? It's really good to be here. I think this is going to be a little bit lighter than some of the other comments. I'm here to talk about the beach and making music happen at the beach. So, does anybody know how to make that happen? There's like, how to make, people talk about this all the time. How do we make a music festival happen? How do we make music happen? We've had some of these things in the past, but it's like, we don't know. Well, I've been asking this question to everyone in this entire city for 10 years, trying to make these things happen, and I've done a lot of things, and I've given up, beaten, beating my head against the wall at some point in time, some of this. People support this, doing this program, doing like live music, because it actually supports our cultural goals, our civic goals for growth. Presenting live music, utilizing our waterfront that way is a cultural amenity that can help attract and retain new residents, visitors, and even win talented workforce. It's not just like, should we have, this is actually important for the growth of the city, is doing these things, amenities that there, if we want to grow into a bigger city, we gotta do these things. But, most of the space to host events on Waterfront are managed by the Cleveland Metroparks, and I love the Cleveland Metroparks, I can't state that enough, they're amazing. They are not an arts organization, and when they present music, they miss the mark on some of the things that we could be accomplishing with arts and culture as a statement to the world, which is what we're doing. If we're being ambitious as Clevelanders, like, we should be like reaching out to the world and saying like, we are up there. They, uh, have a lot of complicated internal and external politics that make it so that they don't work with outside organizations. I didn't understand where that was, so I went and presented programs in this period of the past 10 years. I've done private spaces, and then I repeatedly run into block clubs, putting pressure on property owners to shut down the programming because of parking and traffic complaints, loudness complaints for programs that end at 10:00 PM on a Friday. And complaints that I'm certain our Parks Administration hears that contribute to their organizational choices surrounding music programming. So, we need a clear decision from city leaders on what we're doing here in Cleveland. Are we going to keep traffic and noise complaints down? Are we going to grow into a larger city, offering amenities and cultural, competing and enviable to the largest markets in the world? For this to happen, we don't need a half decade and hundreds of millions of dollars to build new properties. We actually just need to cut a little red tape. We need a simple decision to, permission from our city leaders to use our existing space to present music with support from City Hall. Cleveland could have large-scale lakefront music programs as soon as next summer. It really could just happen if we decide to do it. Please get in touch with me if you'd like to talk. Thanks.
Next we have Justin Strekel, and Justin is from Ward 15. He's here to talk about wage theft, and he's representing Guardians for Fair Work, and he is not being paid by anyone, Justin.
Thank you so very much to this esteemed body for providing me the opportunity to take a few minutes, speak with you, and I would also like to thank all of the members of the Guardians for Fair Work Coalition who are here today. I don't know if they're allowed to clap during this court. Oh, with so many people, you guys can do better than that. One more time for fighting wage theft in Cleveland. Back in September, I came to address this chamber to talk about the fact that in Ohio there are nearly a quarter million documented cases of wage theft every single year in this state, and the average instance is over $2,900 per year. And here in a city where the average median income is only $31,000, that equates to approximately 10% pre-tax of a, of an income cut for Cleveland workers. So my comments today here are twofold. First, I want to thank the leaders who made tonight's vote that is soon to come on Wage Theft Possible, and also preview some of the things that this coalition, the Guardians for Fair Work, will be back next year to talk about how we expand upon building further worker protections. I'd like to recognize members of the Guardians for Fair Work Coalition, which include but are certainly not limited to, the Northeast Ohio Worker Center, and some of their founding members, Grace Heffernan and Asia Jones. Policy matters, there's a lot of people, so if we could do one more big clap at the end. Policy Matters Ohio, specifically Daniel Ortiz and Michael Shields. The North Shore AFL-CIO, specifically Dan O'Malley and Brian Parson, who have been incredible champions of this effort. SEIU Local One, who has turned out heavy tonight. SEIU gets an extra. Cleveland Jobs with Justice and their leader Deb Klein. The Central Ohio Worker Center in Columbus. The Arts Worker, the Art Workers Collective, IRTF, Black Lives Matter Cleveland, the Young Latino Network, and a number other labor and community partners, including Nora Kelly, David Brock, Matthew On, Dana By, Deb Klein, who I already said, Colleen Damerol, and so many others. There's one leader who is not with us tonight that I'd like to recognize, who is our dear departed friend Matt Coons, who's been a part of this coalition from designing our logo to general strategy. But most importantly, I want to thank all of the workers who shared their stories of wage theft, putting themselves at risk of retaliation for this body to take action to prevent them from being robbed by frivolous employers moving forward. I want to thank the elected leaders who tonight have proven that government works best when it is responsive to residents' needs. We're very grateful to Council President Blaine Griffin, who long before being a part of this body, was one of the lead organizers in establishing the Fair Employment Wage Law for which today's vote will build upon. Mayor Bibb and his team, including Austin Davis, Councilwoman Moore for her early and steadfast support for this measure, Columbus City Councilman Dorns, whose work in Columbus and Cincinnati continues to push Ohio forward, U.S. Senator Sherrod Brown and his whole team who have been instrumental to helping us get to this place, and so many others. For tonight's action should not be celebrated as a grand conclusion to addressing wage theft nor other problems facing local workers, but the first step is part of a broader effort to build an economy that works for all of us. So tonight, I thank this chamber, and I'll let you know that Guardians for Fair Work will be back here next year to have your back to ensure that Cleveland invests the resources to build an economy that works for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin. Next we have Sabrina Otis from Ward 15 to talk about domestic violence, not representing anyone, and not being paid by anyone.
Good evening, council. I'm not going to take all night. Really quick, I just want you guys to know that I'm really grateful that you all are going to be voting, including you, on the ordinance that Councilwoman Santana brought before you all. I'm a domestic violence survivor. It is important that even when we go through our crisis, we still have a job to go back to. It is important that that income stays for that family so that they can expand upon and do whatever they need to do to get away from their circumstance and situations. And so that's what I came here tonight to say. I want to say thank you, guys. Can't wait for you to vote for it. And, um, think about it this way, if you guys do it, then the next step is the county, and the next step is the state. I came from a state that has it. We didn't, and so I'm grateful you guys are doing it. Thank you.
Next we have Rose, Rosie Palfy from Parma to talk about the Community Police Commission and Cleveland Mental Health Response Advisory Committee, and Rosie is representing the Cleveland Mental Health Response Advisory Committee, and she is not being paid by anyone.
Hi, my name is Rosie Palfy. I just want to make clear that I'm speaking on behalf of myself and not the entire committee. I want to thank the advocates who were behind the Issue 24 Initiative. I also want to thank the people who have stepped up and volunteered to serve on the commission and congratulate them. I want to remind people that the consent decree created three public bodies, the District Policing Committee, the Cleveland Community Police Commission, and the City of Cleveland Mental Health Response Advisory Committee. I was here about a month ago talking about the memorandum of understanding with the Adams Board of Cuyahoga County that created the Mental Health Response Advisory Committee, also known as EMRAC. On November 4th, the Adams Board sent Mayor Bibb an email notifying him of the board's intention to terminate the MOU to run the EMRAC. The MOU says that either party can terminate the agreement provided they give 45 days notice. That was 31 days ago. We have not heard anything from Cleveland Division of Police or the administration. We have not heard anything about the future plans for moving forward. Members don't know if we're still going to be members. Because I'm not a Cleveland resident, I don't even know if I'd be eligible to be, continue to be a committee member. We have not done a community survey since 2016. We have not held a town hall meeting since 2016. We held a, we had a public presentation, thanks to the Cleveland Community Police Commission, in the summer of 2019. They asked us to come, and Councilman Jones was there. Thank you very much. We, we hear about how the, this is where the city has made the most progress with the consent decree and police reform. My words to you are, don't believe the hype, in the words of Flavor Flav from Public Enemy. I want to give you a prime example. The city was getting ready to do crisis intervention team training on autism a few years ago, and at the January 2020 meeting, I brought up the fact that Cleveland has a general police order, 6.2.02 effective March 1st, 20, 2, I'm sorry, 2002, called Reporting Abuse or Neglect of Mentally Retarded or Developmentally Disabled Adults. I asked the city to please update their policy to remove the offensive language and to update the policy to reflect the new name for the County Board of Developmental Disabilities. I would, I was told it would happen. It hasn't. So that is just an example of me asking for things for years that have never happened. The other thing I wanted to say was, the city recently sent three crisis policies to the court for revision, and they do not reflect the final versions that we voted on. There's substantive changes, so I'll be taking that up with the judge and, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please dispense with the journal. Communications.
File number 12912022 from Law Director Mark D. Griffin. Analysis of City's Fulfillment of Charter Section 115-5. File number 12752022, Dedication plat for re-subdivision of Cedar Extension Redevelopment Project and dedication of East 26th Street between Central and Community College Avenue, East 22nd and East 30th, approved by Committees on Municipal Services and Properties and Development Planning and Sustainability. Without objection, plat approved. File number 12892022 from Mayor's Appointments Committee recommending approval of these nominees for the appointment to Community Police Commission, John Adams, Sandra Benito, Chandra Benito, Adriana Rodriguez. Without objection, these nominations are approved. 12902022 from Mayor's Appointments Committee recommending council's approval of the mayor's appointments to the Community Police Commission. From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, file number 12732022 regarding a transfer of ownership application at 3022 West 25th Street, Ward 14. File number 12742022 regarding a transfer of ownership application at 1471-23, East 21st Street, Ward 7.
Condolence resolutions.
Resolutions of condolence by Councilmember Hairston for Murcille Lett. That's it.
Okay. Any other condolence resolutions? Will all members please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. Congratulatory resolutions.
Resolutions of congratulations by Councilmember Griffin for 100 black men of greater Cleveland by Councilmember. by Councilmember Santana for Robert Rink. Resolutions of recognition by Councilmember Conwell for Cleveland State University College of Law, name change.
Uh, are there any presentations? Councilman Conwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. To bring in students from Cleveland State University, who stood up to fight against, and to change the name, matter of fact...
They came down here like everybody else, and they spoke on the council floor. Are they, are they here today? You guys can move forward. Stephanie Goggins and Bob Ivory.
Could we, uh, could all the council members open up the, uh, well for the Cleveland State students to come in?
Let me say this: council sits back and listens to what, um, people say to us when they come down here to speak. And, uh, as you look at, uh, young Kerry McCormack wrote some legislation earlier this year. You guys can move forward, dealing with the RTA. When they came down to speak, um, when Stephanie Goggins and these students, these bright young students, minus Bob Ivory, you hear Bob, Bobby? I know you're not a young student, but we have something for you also. Come on up forward, move forward. When, um, you guys came down and you spoke and you talked about changing the name of that school, this council voted 100%. They said, "You're right, John Marshall should be changed." And we sit back and we listen to you, just like we're listening to the fair workers people as well and the other people that were speaking, because I, we know that the fair workers people are looking for meaningful jobs, for meaningful benefits, and we heard all of you. So, but I want to say this to you: when I met with, uh, you, Stephanie, and, and some of the students at Cleveland State, you guys remind me of the, uh, really of the civil rights movement. You were, boy, you were serious like you're serious right now. And, uh, you remind me of when people talk about Jane Pittman, when she was fighting about the water piece. She wasn't fighting to, uh, be able to drink water with, uh, uh, with white folks. What she was battling was, she was showing inequality and the injustice that was dealing with people. You remind me of, um, Rosa Parks, when she sat down so we could stand up, and how Rosa Parks pushed the Montgomery Bus Boycott in 1954, and, and they grabbed Martin Luther King and they made him and put him right in front of the civil rights movement. It was students. It was students from the schools in Little Rock, Arkansas. And all of that, you guys remind me of, because you were serious out there fighting, and you were getting into good trouble. You were getting into good trouble. So I say that tonight, and I want to honor you on behalf of Cleveland City Council. Um, I'm not going to read the whole everybody piece. As a matter of fact, I'll let you guys get up and say a few words, then I'll read this out. Young Stephanie?
Hello, everybody. I don't have very much to say. Um, we're just trying to do the right thing and advocate. Thank you.
Oh, they, you guys still have your serious look on it. But, uh, Catherine Hack, is Catherine here? I'm not going to read all of these. You have to move forward. And I'm moving around, my car stopped on me coming here, and I said, "I gotta get here, man, I promised these young students." So people grabbed me. This council of the City of Cleveland, Catherine, is for all of you guys, students against, uh, John Marshall. Your hard work, dedication, and persistent diligence in successfully petitioning Cleveland State University and Cleveland Marshall Law School to remove any references to Chief Justice Marshall and their law school names because of its association with enslaving my people, enslaving African Americans. This council takes great pride in recognizing your passion and equitable justice, and further wishes you continued success and bright and promising future. This is for you, and, uh, you can help me read the other students' names, and we move forward. We like it when the students get out there and move forward to, uh, to help out. Uh, Goggins, can you come forward and you help me out with this to give to the young students?
You want me to read the names?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Emily Forsey?
Thank you.
Robert Dinkins Jr. Sherilyn Clark, who's in absence. Nabila Manaw. Julian Gilbert. Ashley Rice.
You got Bob Ivory over there. Now, you're even young, but you, Bob Ivory. You know, some of these students here, when we look at them, some of them probably would end up becoming your council members, your congress members, even the President of the United States of America, because we live through our children. So some of you guys might even become, uh, uh, Chief Justice in the Supreme Court, because you got to dream and believe that, so we want you guys to continue to keep fighting and move forward, as we say in the jazz, "Well, you got to walk it like you talk it as you lose that beat." So thank you very, very much, and God bless. I got a car start on the side of the road, I got to go. Mike Palensik is going to make the announcement about the mighty, 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 mighty Tar Blooders, well, what we're going to do for Thursday, Louis Moore, and I got to roll. Oh, uh, I need some young folks from city council, like you, Star, to move up. Anthony Harrison, we take some pictures with them, and, uh, Stephanie Howes, and, uh, you, you not young anymore, uh, Joe, but we get the other ones to come up.
Look at this. I'm going to take it behind you.
All right? I'll get it back. Hey, Mike, before this board, they'll... And then we'll send you guys to, uh, I said, "Young, come over there." We'll, we'll send pictures to you guys, to, uh, just, uh, that, right? And I'm going to be in the back. Thank you. Give you this, y'all. I'm going to be here. You guys, congratulations.
and committee review.
Ordinance 1276-2022, by Councilmembers McCormack, Bishop, and Hairston, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to Il Venetian LLC to encroach into the public right-of-way of St. Clair Avenue by installing, using, and maintaining a new trellis structure with retractable canopy awning. Ordinance 1277-2022, by Councilmember Griffin, authorizing the clerk of council to enter into an agreement with Fair Housing Center for Rights and Research to provide professional services regarding the Vacant and Abandoned Property Action Council. Ordinance 1278-2022, by Councilmember Griffin, designating the Calvary Hill Temple Church of God, uh, uh, of God and Christ as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance 1279-2022, by Councilmember Starr, designating the Sidaway Bridge as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance 1280-2022, by Councilmember Griffin, authorizing the clerk of council to enter into an agreement with Western Reserve Land Conservancy, DBA Thriving Communities Institute to provide professional services regarding reforestation, demolition, and rehabilitation, green space, and vacant land restoration, and property information, and code enforcement.
First reading, emergency ordinances to be passed?
Ordinance 1281-2022, by Councilmember Griffin, by departmental request, to amend various sections of Ordinance 194-2021 relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance 1282-2022, by Councilmembers Hairston and Griffin, by departmental request, approving the tax incentive review council's year 2021 recommendations. Ordinance 1283-2022, by Councilmember Griffin, by departmental request, approving the collective bargaining agreement with Cleveland Firefighters Local 93, and to amend Sections 57 and 58 of Ordinance 194-2021 as amended relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance 1284-2022, by Councilmember Griffin, by departmental request, approving the collective bargaining agreement with Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Fingerprinters and Scientific Examiners Unit, and to amend Section 28 of Ordinance 194-2021 relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance 1294-2022, by Councilmember Griffin, by departmental request, to establish the Strategic Priority Subfund, and to transfer and appropriate the sum of $215 million from the General Fund to the newly established Strategic Priority Subfund. Ordinance 1295-2022, by Councilmembers House, Palensik, Conwell, Hairston, and Santana, authorizing the Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Famicos Foundation for the Food Card Distribution Program through the use of Ward's 7, 8, 9, 10, and 14 casino revenue funds. Ordinance 1296-2022, by Councilmember McCormack, authorizing the Director of Department of Public Works to enter into agreement with Tremont West Development Corporation for the Professor Avenue Lighting Project through the use of Ward III casino revenue funds.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Bishop, that the rules be suspended, and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Slythe.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Palensik, Santana, Slythe, Spencer, Starr. 16 yeas.
Call the roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Palensik, Santana, Slythe, Spencer, Starr. On 1294-2022, 15 yeas, 1 nay. On all others, 16 yeas, no nays.
First reading, emergencies, emergency resolution referred for administrative review and committee review.
Resolution 1285-2022, by Councilmembers McCormack, Bishop, and Hairston, declaring the intent to vacate a portion of the Detroit Superior Viaduct.
First reading, emergency resolutions adopted.
Resolution 1286-2022, by Councilmember Bishop, withdrawing objection to a new D3 liquor permit at 9322 Nelson Avenue, and repealing Resolution 698-2022, objecting to said permit. Resolution 1287-2022, by Councilmember Palensik, withdrawing objection to the transfer of ownership of a C1, C2 liquor permit at 15521 St. Clair Avenue, and repealing Resolution 1021-2022, objecting to said permit. Resolution 1288-2022, by Councilmember Palensik, withdrawing objection to the transfer of stock of a C1, C2 liquor permit at 18501 Nottingham Road, and repealing Resolution 22, 20, dash, 2022, objecting to said transfer. Resolution 1292-2022, by Councilmember Bishop, objecting to the transfer of ownership of a D5 liquor permit to 4591 Turney Road. Resolution 1293-2022, by Councilmember Griffin, approving the appointments to the Community Police Commission.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Bishop, that the rules be suspended, and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Slythe.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Palensik, Santana, Slythe, Spencer, Starr. 16 yeas.
Call the roll on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Palensik, Santana, Slythe, Spencer, Starr. 16 yeas.
Second reading, emergency ordinances to be passed?
Ordinance 756-2022, as amended, by Councilmembers Santana, Slythe, House, and McCormack, to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new Section 17167 related to paid safe leave. Ordinance 760-2022, by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to exercise the second option to renew a lease agreement with MRK Aviation to conduct air cargo operations and other support services for various tenants of Cleveland Hopkins International Airport. Ordinance 867-2022, by Councilmember Spencer, designating the Romanian Baptist Church as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance 881-2022, by Councilmembers Starr, Hairston, and Griffin, by departmental request, approving the addition of property located at 2024 East 70th Street to the Northeast Ohio Advanced Energy District, accepting and approving a petition and plan from a property owner in the district identifying a special energy improvement project, declaring it necessary to conduct the Special Energy Improvement Project, providing for the assessment of of the cost of such Special Energy Improvement Project, authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into an energy project cooperative agreement and a special assessment agreement to implement the project and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 892-2022, as amended, by Councilmember Griffin, to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new Sections 190.01 through 06 related to wage theft and payroll fraud prevention. Ordinance 1037-2022, by Councilmembers Hairston, Griffin, and House, by departmental request, to amend the 10th Whereas Clause, the title and Sections 1 and 3 of Ordinance 120, I'm sorry, 1123-2021, and to supplement the ordinance by adding new Sections 1A, 1B, and 1C relating to the development of 9410 Housing Avenue. Ordinance 1065-2022, by Councilmembers Palensik and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to renew lease agreement with Cuyahoga County for the lease of certain space located on various floors of the Justice Center for a term of one year beginning October 2nd, 2022. Ordinance 1115-2022, by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to exercise the first option to renew a contract with Avio Multi-Amp Corp. to provide electrical test equipment and labor and materials necessary to maintain or repair electrical test equipment for the Division of Cleveland Public Power, Department of Public Utilities. Ordinance 1116-2022, by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to exercise the first option to renew a contract with HomeServe USA Corp. to provide optional protection plan and service contracts to residential water and sewer customers for the Divisions of Water and Water Pollution Control, Department of Public Utilities. Ordinance 1117-2022, by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into a contract with Rust Belt Riders Composting LLC to design and conduct a composting pilot program for wasted food generated by vendors at West Side Market. Ordinance 1119-2022, as amended, by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to enter into a maintenance and operating agreement with Cleveland Terminal and Equipment Consortium at Cleveland Hopkins International Airport for an initial period expiring on December 31st, 2030, with two five-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Port Control. Ordinance 1121-2022, by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more requirement contracts without competitive bidding with DC Bates Equipment Company for the purchase of proprietary parts and services as appropriate to install, maintain, repair, and replace on an as-needed basis. POSI plus cable cart equipment, including installation if necessary for the Division of Cleveland Public Power, Department of Public Utilities, for a term of two years. Ordinance 1145-2022, by Councilmembers Palensik and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for the fiscal year 2022 Burn Justice Assistance Grant. Local solicitation and authorizing one or more contracts with Cuyahoga County and other, and, and the cities of Euclid, Parma, Cleveland Heights, and Garfield Heights needed to implement the grant. Ordinance 1146-2022, by Councilmembers Palensik and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from, from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for the Ohio ARPA Law Enforcement Violence Reduction and Staffing Grant to provide funding for retention bonuses for police officers. Ordinance 1147-2022, by Councilmembers Palensik and Griffin, by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services... to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 21 Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant and authorizing one or more contracts with Mental Health Services for homeless persons, DBA Frontline Services, and the Near West Side Multi-Service Corporation, DBA May Dugan Center, to implement the grant. Ordinance 1148, 2022, by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2022 State Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant... (cough) excuse me, to fund the Cartel Gang Narcotics Laundering Task Force and authorizing the Director to enter into one or more contracts with various agencies or entities to implement the grant. Ordinance 1149, 2022, as amended, by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2020... for fiscal year 22 ARPA Violent Crime Reduction Grant to fund Violence Interrupters, Crime Gun Intelligence Center, and Violent Crime Reduction Teams, authorizing the Director to enter into one or more contracts with Case Western Reserve University and authorizing the Director of Public Safety or appropriate Director to enter into various contracts needed to implement the grant. Ordinance 1150, 2022, as amended, by Councilmembers Jones, Bishop, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request, giving consent of the City of Cleveland to the County of Cuyahoga for the reconstruction of Lee Road from McCracken Road to Miles Avenue, to apply for and accept an allocation of county motor vehicle license tax funds for the improvement and authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to enter into any relative agreements for the improvement. Ordinance 1152, 2022, by Councilmembers House, Bishop, and Hairston by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to the Manufacturing Advocacy and Growth Network to encroach into the public right-of-way of Chester Avenue by installing, using, and maintaining an exterior sign. Ordinance 1153, 2022, by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to exercise first option to renew a contract with Backflow Solutions to provide professional services necessary for the administration of the Backflow Data Management Program. Ordinance 1154, 2022, by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to exercise first option to renew a contract with Highlight Airfield Services to provide for labor and materials necessary to remove rubber and any other contaminants from paved surfaces for the various divisions of the Department of Port Control. Ordinance 1155, 2022, by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to enter into a lease agreement with Alaska Airlines for the lease of certain spaces on Concourse C and in the terminal building at Cleveland Hopkins International Airport for the purpose of supporting its check-in and processing of passengers for the Department of Port Control for a period of two years with three one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Port Control. Ordinance 1156, 2022, by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, determining the method of making the public improvement of replacing roofs and related appurtenances at Garrett Morgan Jr. and Crown Water Treatment Plants and authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Ordinance 1198, 2022, by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2021 Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Fund Grant for the operation of the Cartel Gang Narcotics and Laundering Task Force, formerly known as Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force, and authorizing the Director to enter into agreements with Cuyahoga County Sheriff's Office and other entities to implement the grant. Ordinance 1199, 2022, by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Works to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Education for the 2023 Summer Food Service Program at Camp George Forbes, authorizing the purchase by requirement contract of breakfasts and lunches and of food, food products, beverages, condiments, and paper products to implement the grant for the Division of Recreation, Department of Public Works, and authorizing the Director to contract with various nonprofit organizations for the implementation of the program. Ordinance 1200, 2022, by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Directors of Public Safety or Law to apply for and accept grants from County Public Safety and Justice Services for fiscal year 2022 Stop Violence Against Women Act... uh, I'm sorry. Stop Violence Against Women Act Program for a sexual assault advocate and for the law enforcement and prosecution components of the Cleveland Domestic Violence Program and authorizing one or more contracts with the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center and other entities to implement the grants. Ordinance 1202, 2022, by Councilmembers Hairston and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of City Planning to enter into a multi-party agreement relating to the city's participation in the Cleveland Metropolitan Park District's grant known as Cleveland Harbor Eastern Embayment Resilience Study and to cause payment for the city's share. Ordinance 1205, 2022, by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety for fiscal year 2023 Impaired Driving Enforcement Program and Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. Ordinance 1206, 2022, by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 21 Recovery Ohio Law Enforcement Program to provide funding for the operation of the Cartel Gang Narcotics Laundering Task Force. Ordinance 1208, 2022, by Councilmembers Hairston and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of City Planning to enter into an amendment to a contract with Code Studio Inc. to extend the term of the contract through June 30, 2023 to provide additional engagement activities for the Form-Based Zoning Pilot Initiative and for review of draft code elements. Ordinance 1225, 2022, by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, to amend Sections... Section 135.46 of the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, as amended relating to veterinary service agreements. Ordinance 1228, 2022, by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Emergency Management Agency for fiscal year 22 ARPA First Responder Wellness Recruitment Retention and Resiliency Grant Safety Recruitment Program, authorizing the Director to enter into one or more service contracts to obtain marketing, promotional, public relations, advertising, and creative services, including materials, equipment, and supplies necessary for recruitment, authorizing the purchase or lease of television and radio, advertising time, and other media during the grant term. Ordinance 1229, 2022, by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Emergency Management Agency for fiscal year 22 ARPA First Responder Wellness Recruitment Retention and Resiliency Grant Safety Wellness and authorizing the Director to acquire licenses for wellness application to be used by first responders and dispatchers. Ordinance 1230, 2022, by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to lease certain space located at Building Number 208 at 5851 Cargo Road at Cleveland Hopkins International Airport to Swissport USA to support aviation ground handling operations and maintenance services for various airlines at the airport for a term of two years with three one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Port Control. Ordinance 1231, 2022, by Councilmember Griffin, authorizing the Clerk of Council to enter into an agreement with On Technology Partners for the professional services necessary to advise and assist in the maintenance and performance of computer technology projects and to provide specific computer technology services for Cleveland City Council. Ordinance 1232, 2022, as amended, by Councilmembers Hairston, McCormack, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of City Planning to employ one or more professional consultants to produce a North Coast Lakefront Master Plan and authorizing the Director to enter into one or more contracts with various entities or agencies to perform community engagement activities relating to the production and/or implementation of the master plan for a period of one year with a one-year option to renew exercisable by the Director of City Planning. Ordinance 1233, 2022, by Councilmembers McCormack, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with 1209 Fairfield LLC, Wards Designee, to assist with the financing of the Driftwood Mixed Use Development Project located at 1111 Fairfield Avenue to provide for payments to the city... I'm sorry, to the Cleveland Metropolitan School District and to declare certain improvements of real property to be a public purpose. Ordinance 1234, 2022, by Councilmembers McCormack, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with Peninsula MFH Owner, Wards Designee, to assist with the financing of the Carter Road Apartment Project to be located at 1951 through 61 Carter Road to provide for payments to the city... to the Cleveland Metropolitan School District and to declare certain improvements to be... and to declare certain improvements to real property to be a public purpose. Ordinance 1261, 2022, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, authorizing refunding and remarketing of airport system revenue bonds, authorizing a tender or exchange program with respect to the refunding of airport system revenue bonds and providing for the appointment of professionals and authorizing documents with respect thereto, authorizing supplemental indentures and other agreements related to the bonds and authorizing and approving related matters. Ordinance 1262, 2022, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, to amend Sections 19207, 12, and 13 of the codified ordinances, as amended relating to... relating to taxation of proceeds of sports gambling and making certain technical corrections. Ordinance 1263, 2022, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Finance on behalf of Cleveland Municipal Court to apply for and accept a grant from Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services through the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board for the Addiction Treatment Program fiscal year 23 and authorizing one or more contracts with community assessment and treatment services or other agencies as necessary to implement the grant. Ordinance 1266, 2022, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Finance to employ one or more professional consultants for after-hours answering services for the Division of Information Technology and Services, Department of Finance, for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Finance. Ordinance 1267, 2022, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, to make additional appropriations of $215,400,000 to the General Fund, $5,450,000 to the Special Revenue Fund, $1,620,000 to the Internal Service Fund, $515,000 to the Small Enterprise Fund, and $42,000 to the Debt Service Fund. Ordinance 1268, 2022, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, to make temporary appropriations for the current payrolls and other ordinary expenses of the City of Cleveland from the period from January 1, 2023 until the effective date of the Annual Appropriation Ordinance for fiscal year ending December 31, 2023. Ordinance 1269, 2022, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, to provide for the transfer and amendment to the General Fund appropriations in the amount of $21,985,000 and $70,000 within the Small Enterprise Fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Bishop, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Slythe.
All right, uh, before... we're gonna call the roll, but after the roll is called, I do wanna make sure that we acknowledge Councilwoman Jenny Spencer for recusal. So call the roll, and then Councilwoman Spencer, after the roll, then you can, uh, recuse yourself.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Slythe, Spencer, Starr. Sixteen yays.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Please recuse me from, uh, 1202.
So noted. Please call the roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Slythe, Spencer, Starr. Fifteen yays. Nope. On 1065, 2022... I'm sorry. That whole list? On 1065, 2022, on 1117, 2022, on 1232, 2022, fifteen yays, one nay. On 1267, 2022, 1269, 2022... The same, fifteen yays, one nay. On 1202, 2022, fifteen yays, no nays, one recusal. On all others, sixteen yays.
All right. Second reading ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 956, 2022, as amended, by Councilmember Moore, changing the use area and height districts of parcels of land west of Pearl Road and north of Broadview Road and adding an urban form overlay as identified on the attached map. Ordinance 1017, 2022, by Councilmember McCormack, to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new Section 357.071 relating to yards and courts. Ordinance 1193, 2022, by Councilmember Griffin, changing the use area... the use height and area districts of parcels of land north of Cedar Avenue between East 107th Street and Stokes Boulevard and subjecting an area titled "The Site Development Boundary" to Section 333.02 of the Cleveland Zoning Code and attaching the approved site development plan map.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Bishop, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Slythe.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Slythe, Spencer, Starr. Fifteen yays.
Call the roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Slythe, Spencer, Starr. Fifteen yays.
All right, thank you. Are there any introductions? Any introductions? I have, uh, two former council people that are here, and once a council person, always a council person. I'd like to acknowledge Councilman Jeff Johnson, if he could please stand. Councilman Jeffrey Johnson. We also have former councilperson TJ Dow. Former councilperson TJ Dow. Councilwoman House?
Yes, I wanted to give a shout-out for our Ward 7 residents, Ms. Charlotte Perkins, small business owner, R-Cap Security. She's in the house. And then Alana Garrett-Purgerson, who is just newly appointed to the Cleveland Police Commission, is a Ward 7 resident. Congratulations.
Councilman Brian Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to give...
Mister Chairman, I just want to give recognition to the Kauai County Democratic Party's Chairman and Ward Sixteen Resident, Dave Brock.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Spencer?
Thanks. I'd like to recognize a number of fantastic Ward Fifteen residents who are here tonight, many of them leaders of the Guardians for Fair Work Campaign, Grace Heffernan, Bridget Kelly, Randy and Ed Allard, just to name a few. In case I've missed anyone, I apologize, but wanting to recognize our, our talent and passion and, uh, leadership in Ward Fifteen.
Thank you. Councilwoman Deborah Gray?
Hi, I just wanna recognize Andrea Rodriguez, who just was appointed on the Police Commission Board. I also wanna recognize Pam Mason Gray, my family. As well as Pre-Chegg Committee Person Eric Walker, Ward Four. And last but not least, our, uh, great, um, a great person from Cleveland Housing Solution, Roger Carney.
Councilwoman House?
I forgot, and I don't know how, I forgot, I know she's gonna kill me, my girl, Ms. Tisha Dawson, Ward Seven resident. I see you back there. I was looking, I was like, oh, I forgot.
All right. Are there any more introductions? Seeing no other introductions, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Councilman Mike Polynsic?
Mister Chairman, my honorable colleagues, Madam Clerk, I rise to announce, um, what's gonna take place on two, on Thursday. But first of all, I wanna as well congratulate, um, Tommy Lombardo and the St. Edward's Eagles. Uh, Tommy's family grew up in the Collinwood Community, his mom and dad, and I wanna congratulate them on winning the, um, the state title for the, uh, Division One category. But I also wanna rise tonight to mention about a wonderful man, a wonderful institution in our community, and that's Ted Ginn and Ginn Academy. And the Glenville Tar Blutters for winning. For winning the state, the state four, Division Four title. Uh, I have the distinct pleasure of serving on the board at Ginn Academy. I've been on the board since day one, um, worked with Ted from day one. And I don't have to tell you, it's just not about athletics and football at Ginn Academy. It's about success. It's about education. It's about being somebody. When you see those young men, you go into Ginn Academy, as I do so often, it's put out their hand, "Welcome to Ginn Academy." They believe in themselves, they believe in the school, they believe in what they do every day. Ted Ginn has saved so many young men. You realize the overwhelming majority of men in that, the young men in that building were young men at risk, and he went out of his way to save them and put them in an environment that not only teaches brotherhood and success, but a winning philosophy. On Thursday, December eighth, at ten o'clock, we will have a motorcade leaving from the Glenville Football Field, Bump Taylor Field, East one hundred twentieth, and Arlington. Uh, with that, that procession will come down St. Clair Avenue and will end up at Public Hall, uh, across the street. Uh, we, please, join with us for the celebration. Fifteen oh, no school, no Cleveland public school in the history has won a state title. No Cleveland public school. Everyone is welcome to proceed in the motorcade, which will be a police escorted motorcade, of course, by the administration. We appreciate that. We wanna make sure that that motorcade, again, will leave at ten o'clock from Bump Taylor Field, East one hundred twentieth Arlington. Uh, we plan, it takes us about an hour to get downtown with the parade, and then across the hall at Public Hall, there will be a cer- ceremony to recognize Ted Ginn and the Glenville Tar Blutters for an outstanding season, but also for what Ted has done for the young men in the Glenville and Collinwood community. We look forward to seeing all. Everyone is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other announcements, we'll go to Miss Lanius, and I do believe that, um, Chris Harsh is first, and then Councilman Joe Jones has asked for extra time.
Thank you, Mister President. It was good to see you on Saturday night in Canton, just a few blocks from where I grew, grew up, to watch the, uh, Tar Blutters win their state title. Uh, I wish more of our colleagues could've made it. It was great to see the mayor there as well. Um, I just wanna address issue twenty-four, why we'll always call issue twenty-four. I think we have made a mistake. Um, I was always under the impression, like our activist friends were, that we were supposed to meet all those categories in appointing the thirteen people. Um, and I think that the issue was very clear in that. Um, I, I was never under the impression that we didn't need to until about two weeks ago when the Law Department sent that, uh, decision out. Um, but I do also wanna thank, uh, Councilman Jones for holding four days of hearings where we actually got to interview every single candidate, um, and we got a chance to get to know all of them. And I think that all thirteen candidates are very high caliber people, and I'm, I'm really excited to see all of you, uh, take, take your seats on this board. Um, but my third point, then, is that I think the issue has to be, uh, litigated, uh, but that's not our job as, as, as a legislative body. We don't take things to court, we don't question this, the, the legality of this. We looked at the individuals, and on an individual one-by-one level, all thirteen people were fantastic. And I wish you all the best, as, as you do this very hard work. Um, but I, I do wanna just, uh, get that off my chest. Uh, secondly, I almost logged a protest vote earlier this year, and I decided, I decided not to, but I just think that I'd like to say for the, for the record, we should never name anything after anyone, ever, ever again. We will never come to agreement on who deserves naming rights or honor or memorial. And it will always lead to arguments and bitterness within the community when we decide individually who gets the honor of being memorialized. I also think it just has a bad precedent for our neighborhoods. One of the first things I had to do as councilman was, uh, remove a roadside memorial. It was a very uncomfortable situation. I tracked down the, uh, the, the, the family of the person who died and talked to them first. But I think that this will always just lead to, uh, conflicts within our community. So I, I encourage people to reconsider the notion of even naming anything after anyone. Uh, there's lots of birds in nature, there's lots of trees, we can name things after the world we live in. We already number half the streets in the city, so we've avoided that conflict. Um, so I'd like to just encourage my colleagues to consider, uh, nature the next time you need to name something. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Joseph Jones, and he has asked for extra time.
Mister Chairman, I rise, I just wanna take this opportunity to, um, talk a little bit about the commission and, um, and the people who made it possible. We always talk about democracy and, and why it's so important. That is the very foundation of why we are here making the decisions we make. And at the end of the day, those decisions impact the people who we represent. And I can recall being here in this chambers and having the opportunity to talk to people like Brenda Bickerstaff and the crew that she brought down here. And they just wanting to have a little bit of acknowledgement about the importance of police accountability in the city of Cleveland. And being told, "Well, if you want it to be a certain way, maybe you need to put it on the ballot." Well, Brenda Bickerstaff and the framers of the Police Commission, Jennifer Blakely, Arad D. Samira, Alicia Kirkman, Kareem Hitten, Latoya Goldsby, and others, went and put it on the ballot. And they did something that was unprecedented, something that I had never seen in all the time I had been in politics. They won against the Police Department. I had never in all the time, being in elected office, saw the Police Department or the Fire Department lose an initiative on the ballot. So this was the very first time that it happened. And what they clearly wanted to set forth was having a city police department that was fair, a police department that had a sense of commitment and dedication to diversity, a police department that was committed and dedicated in a way of looking at ways of changing its policing, so that its policing was not directed towards one group or another, but a system that had a policing that if you police on this side, you police the same way on that side. And I just wanna take the time to thank the council for going through so much work and dedication to this effort. I wanna thank the mayor's administration for their appointment. I wanna thank my colleague, Mike Polynsic, and the Safety Committee, and the Safety Committee as a whole, uh, going through this summer through numerous applications to narrow it down to the three contestants that we had selected. And I want to just mention, acknowledge those contest, those, uh, commissioners who have been appointed, who are here today if they would stand. I'm gonna read off all the names. Chandra Benito, Kyle Early, Kate Kennedy, Gregory Reeves, Terry Wong, Sharina Zaid, John Adams, James Truer, Charles Donaldson Jr., Alina Garrett Ferguson, Janice Ridgway, Adriana Rodriguez, and Pete Van Leeuwen. The city and this nation is looking at you to make some very tough decisions. And those decisions are going to be met at the, at the judge and in front of a judge. It's going to be met with criticism. Uh, you're going to have all eyes of the nation upon you. It is incumbent upon you to take this position seriously. It's incumbent upon you to spend an enormity of time and energy, uh, dealing with the issues. And at least above all things, to be true to yourself, to be true to your God, and to be true to this city. And we want to have a commission that we can be proud of, a commission that this nation will look upon and say, "We want this kind of commission in our city." So with that being said, congratulations to those who are on the commission. May God, may you work together, may you stand together, and may you do it in a way where all of Cleveland can be proud of what you do. Thank you. And then lastly, I stand here because I've heard about the talk of, and I appreciate my colleague, again, Mike Polynsic, talking about how we won a state championship. And I wanna say to my colleagues, and I wanna say to the administration, which is something that's really important, is the investment in our kids, investments into their sports activities, and making that a priority again, giving our young people to have the outlet they need to express themselves in the fields of interests that they may have, whether it is track and field, or it is football, or baseball, or any other sport that may be there. And one of the things that I saw, and I would say this to my colleagues, and so another piece was shared with today at the council, was that when I go to sporting events with my daughter, and I have an opportunity to see the other teams play and the basketball teams play, and they compete with other schools, it hurts me to see that our schools don't have the same kind of coaching, doesn't have the same kind of equipment, don't have the same preparedness, uh, as other schools have. And it's embarrassing, because I remember a time in Cleveland where we took pride in our sports. We took such pride that we would not let an outside team come in and go push us around. To have that happen hurt us. And so all we knew back then was to be competitive and to compete in basketball and in track. And we, we, those teams at those time periods were great teams. So I, I will say this to the council and to the administration, let's make sure we make that a priority for our young folks. And if you give them the opportunity and you give them the resources, they will excel like we see in Ginn Academy. Again, let's give them a great big round of applause for the success that they have brought to our city. Thank you, Mister President. I yield.
Thank you. Uh, before we adjourn, I do wanna take the privilege, if we could, oh, Councilwoman, uh, House? Councilwoman House?
Thank you, sorry. Um, I, um, here on behalf of our little team, Councilwoman Santana asked me to bring remarks, um, on behalf of Ordinance seven fifty-six, um, which is paid safe leave. Uh, I, I just really, um, first and foremost, I want to thank, um, the diligent work and commitment of Councilwoman Santana and Councilman Slyffe. Um, they've been working on this for a really long time. Um, I also would like to thank you, uh, Council President, for creating the pathway to make this happen, as well as our colleagues. Um, many people don't realize, um, what we have going on in our community. Um, you know, uh, we had a colleague just talked about the heaviness of calls that, um, they received, um, with people just sharing their stories when it relates to domestic violence as well as sexual assault. Here in our city, last year, there were over nine thousand reported cases of domestic violence and sexual assault. That's twenty-five people every single day in the city of Cleveland. Every single day. Paid safe leave for those individuals who are working here in the city of Cleveland. It grants them the opportunity, the time, just to try to figure things out when they are dealing with a very traumatic situation. And I'm just really proud, really, really proud of this body for us to begin to continue to push forward, to show Clevelanders, specifically our public servants who show up every single day from Clevelanders, to let them know that we are in partnership with them, we are supporting them when they are having trials. No one asked to be in this situation, but just to know that you won't lose your livelihood when you're just trying to put it back together. So again, I just wanna thank you, Councilman Slyffe, Councilwoman Santana, Councilman Pres- uh, Council President Griffin, and this body for just being a leader. And I, I know there's much more work that we will do together to showing Clevelanders how much of a partnership we have with them, um, so people know that we got their back. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I do wanna take a brief moment to acknowledge, and I know that, um, this is the last council meeting, and, uh, a guy who I've gotten to know, and he doesn't say much, he is hilarious, he's a great guy, but now he's gonna wind up being a judge and probably leaving us very soon, Councilman Brian Mooney. Let's give him a round of applause.
I'll still be here for a meeting in January, though.
All right. We'll, we'll save our roast for then, but I just didn't wanna take the chance, 'cause, uh, I know that those results will be certified soon, so.
Two more weeks.
But congratulations and, uh, you know, congratulations on your new journey, and, uh, we look forward, uh, to you in your next position. All right. That being said, this council is adjourned to the call of the Order of the Chair. The next council meeting will be Monday, January the ninth, two thousand, twenty twenty-three. This committee is adjourned.